Good evening. It's 6:30 PM, Tuesday, February 20th, 2024. This is the Carney Board of Alderman Meeting. Call the meeting to order.
Please speak for the Fudge of Allegiance.
The Fudge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Shirley, have you had a chance to take roll?
I have taken roll. Everybody is present. You have a form.
We'll move on to public hearings this evening. We have two items. Notice stuff for public hearings. The first item on our agenda is a public hearing to receive public comments regarding our proposed water and sewer rate increase. If you would turn it over to staff for a presentation, and then I'll officially open the floor afterwards for public input.
The proposed water and sewer rate increase would not affect any usage for 2,000 gallons or less. For each 1,000 gallons over 2,000, there would be a proposed $2.22 rate increase for each 1,000 gallons for water, and then $2.27 for each 1,000 gallons over 2,000 for sewer. So for a resident that uses 3,000 gallons a month, that would equate to $4.49 a month. This is necessary to comply with both EPA and Department of Natural Resource regulatory standards, also to cover increased operating expenses, replace equipment, and improve our system maintenance. We're making a concentrated effort to become more proactive on maintenance instead of reactive, and that's the reason for this rate increase.
Any other input from staff on the proposed rate increase for water and sewer? Seeing none, I'll open the floor for public comment or input. If you wish to speak for or against their proposed water and sewer rate increase, I'll have you come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Floor is open for public comment. Seeing nobody move, I'll close the floor. Any discussion from the board on the proposal?
All right. Next item under public hearing is a public hearing to receive public comments regarding the proposed amendment to permitted land use in the M Industrial District. We'll turn it over to staff for report.
Y'all do quick comments. So this proposal was staff-initiated to add some additional land uses that would be permitted, uses in the industrial zoning districts. So we'd expand uses to include banks, financial institutions, hotel motel, gas stations, or healthcare facilities. It would accommodate some proposed development, but also allow some flexibility for others down the road that might wish to locate in an area similar to those.
Go ahead and open the floor for public comment and input for the proposed amendment to permit the land use in the M Industrial District. Floor is open. If you wish to speak for or against a proposed amendment, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing nobody move, I will close the floor for comment. Any discussion from the board? All right, we'll move on to personal appearances. We are honored to have our Fire Chief, Mr. Kevin Pratt, here this evening. He is on the agenda representing the Carney Area Development Council to provide an update on the innovation business part. Chief, you have the floor.
Kevin Pratt, Fire Chief, I have a position as a tax entity on the Carney Area Development Council, and due to my resignation of the past president, I was the last president at the end of '22. So got to start managing the transition with Carolyn coming in. So kind of long and short of what we've done since she got here, we transferred all of our leads over to her to try to pursue, go through incentive options, availabilities that people might have. We've got Phase Four open, so there was eight lots in there. We've since sold one, so we still have seven of those available, three on the north side and four on the south. Those lots range anywhere from a little over an acre to almost two. And then we do have Phase Five, the 17 acres that is immediately north of that area. We have had a few leads on that area as well. Nothing has come to fruition at this point, but it's available. We're not actively marketing it. We've given Carolyn some data on what that could look like to sell that based on the project type, immediate development versus long-term development, things like that. We do have pending, potential pending project right now for Phase Four. We'll see how that plays out, so we could end up selling a couple lots later on this year. As far as the financial piece, obviously, the city has a stake in that. We don't currently pay any of the Kansas City Area Development Council dues or any of those other dues that we were paying, and Sean was there working on our behalf. So we're kind of down, downside our expenses. We do have minimal dues coming in from some of the board positions, global members, civil members and such. That basically keeps our taxes current and any of our ongoing expenses that we have just to manage the foundation. So we'll be looking at, you know, interest payments, two a year. One comes up in June, one comes in December. So it's in our interest to move some property if at all possible. That's kind of along the short of where we're going. We're not really actively meeting a whole lot. We're just kind of facilitating with Carolyn as far as doing land contracts and stuff like that, obviously keeping the maintenance up, keeping a mode, those kind of things. So happy to answer any questions that anybody might have.
Any questions from the board?
Carolyn, anything on this?
So that the city has agreed to partner and continue to look at making some assistance with some of your interest only payments on the ground debt. Do you foresee a continued need for that?
Honestly, Mayor, it kind of depends on what goes on through the year. So last year, we did have a lot sale, and we had a contract on a second lot. So we opted to pay all of that first lot sale on the note itself. In hindsight, we've, since that second contract fell through, we probably should have restricted a few of those funds, doubled back. Best we know, we can keep about 20% off a lot sale, which would continue to float the interest through the year. So should we get a couple lots sold this year, we should be able to maintain that ourselves.
Great.
That's kind of where we're at right now.
Great. Thank you for being here, sir.
Thank you.
Next item under personal appearances, we have Janine Morris and Sean Warfield with Carney-Holt Can. I don't know if all of you want to come up together as a group, or who would like to speak, but excited to have you guys here, an organization that's been a part of our community for many, many years. Kind of, they're going to share some exciting changes and some other opportunities. So you have the floor, and thank you for being here.
Right. Well, thank you for letting us come. So my name's Janine Morris, and I work for Beacon Mental Health, which was formerly known as Tri-County Mental Health. We just went through a name change last fall. Same company, same mission, same ownership. We just changed our name and our logo. But tonight, I'm here, like you said, representing Carney-Holt Can, which is your local prevention coalition that I help with. And I also have Sean Warfield, and we also have Jim over here, who stands to, representing our coalition, and she's going to share with us today as well. So we wanted to share what our coalition is all about, our mission, and want to invite you to be involved how you can. So Carney-Holt Can, CAN stands for Community Acting Now, and it's a coalition of passionate volunteers deeply concerned about the impact of substance use and suicide in youth in our area. And so a coalition, we're bringing together a diverse group of individuals who care about a common goal, and our common goal in this coalition is preventing risky behaviors that threaten the health and safety of our kids. So in prevention, we're trying to hit this off before it starts as much as we can. So we use a combination of approaches, including educational, policy change, and environmental change, and together, we're trying to reduce risk factors, like including youth access to these substances, and the social acceptability of substance use, and then we're trying to build protective factors. So healthy coping skills, connection with a trusted adult, improving mental wellness. And so those are some of the goals that we have. And why do we find this so important? Because studies show that 90% of Americans with substance use disorders, that's nine out of 10, started smoking, drinking, or doing other drugs before the age of 18. And decades of research show that young people react differently to alcohol. Teens get drunk twice as fast as adults, and they're more, have more trouble knowing when to stop. And the adolescent brain isn't fully developed until around age 25. And so introducing those substances before the brain is fully developed does lower the impulse control and can increase that risk of addiction. Again, getting those stats for the nine out of 10 becoming addicted before the age of 18 for their first use. So that's why we care so much about this. That's why we're trying to get that education out to the community, so that we can educate parents and caring adults, and educate kids, so that kids can make more healthy decisions for their, more informed healthy decisions for their life, and so adults can put some of those safeguards in place for those kids. So I'm going to turn the time over to Sean for a minute, so she can kind of talk about how she got involved in the coalition and why she thinks it's important.
Sean Warfield, I know a lot of you. I've been a member of Carney-Holt Can since around 2013. I'm also a therapist in the North Kansas City School District. I work with kids at risk, sixth through 12th grade. So just a little bit about me. I had two kids graduate from Carney. My daughter graduated in 2019, and my son graduated in 2016. When they were in middle school, Carney-Holt Can used to have things called Parent University, and before I even knew what Carney-Holt Can was, I would go to those. Wonderful speakers. It was just a great way, parenting, substance abuse education, suicide prevention. They just had really great programs back then. I got involved with Carney-Holt Can in around 2013. I came to a board meeting. They were talking about a Clean Air Carney to protect our youth from places that allowed smoking where our kids work and where our kids dying. And so that's how I became involved, and I started going to the meetings, and then have been going ever since. They, I found out they did a lot more than just, you know, the clean air ordinance that we got pushed through, and I just became really interested. At that same time, I started attending board meetings, and I guess it's been however many years that's been. You don't see me, but I'm online. Rarely do I miss them.
You used to attend in person before we did it online.
I attended all the time in person, then COVID. I'm like, this is kind of nice on my couch. So, but I did, it did get me really interested in what our city was doing. And I just feel like, we've met with Rain, I just feel like the city and Carney-Holt Can partnering to help our youth is just a great idea. So that's why we're here to share a little bit about it.
So we just really wanted to make sure that we're inviting and letting people know about Carney-Holt Can and trying to get that, like she said, with COVID, some different things have changed, and I think it's really dropped our attendance with our memberships as well. And so we're just trying to get more people involved, get a wider community sector, because we know that strong coalitions work best when they have members from a very diverse group across the city. So we're looking for people in the school, support, law enforcement, parents, faith-based communities, public health departments, other local leaders, and students and parents, of course. So that just, that wider base just gives us a wider reach. It gives us more access to local information, so we have local, local problems get solved better by locals. So it gives us a better idea of what you're seeing in the community as problems, where you're seeing that with your own children, or friends and different people. And then we can go ahead and make our plans more directed for the community that we're serving in. So we just want to reach out and invite people to be involved however you can. And we also will be holding an information meeting on Tuesday, March 5th. That's two weeks from today, here at City Hall, from 4:00 to 5:00, 5:15. And that will just be somewhere where you can learn a little bit more about the coalition, a little bit more details about some of the issues that we're seeing here in Carney that we're working towards right now, and then just another invitation to just kind of, how can we get more involvement? So, and then we also do meet monthly as a coalition on the second Thursday of each month at the Carney Mid-Continent Library from 4:00 to 5:00. So that's just always an open invitation, just a monthly meeting that we have occurring. So we just are appreciative for you letting us be here, but also just trying to get that word out, and just trying to find that community base to just get the better, better invitation or better involvement all around, being able to help our kids. And I think we can all agree that we're all trying to help keep those kids healthy and strong and get them to adulthood safely. So that's our goal.
In an ever-changing world where, so, thank you both so much. Thank you, Sean and Jeb and Carney-Holt Can for all you do for Carney and Holt, and I'm looking forward to the meeting in a couple weeks.
And how I got involved with my son was because Carney-Holt had a, he had down in the basement here. My son was in sixth grade. What's cooking in your neighborhood? They had three tables full of Peranella. They had just tasted it from adults and kids, and they were all just from Carney, you know, had three tables full. He gave a little talk, and my son said, I gotta go tell my friends. So we got involved and continued on. He got involved with deep vision, but we, it's been, a lot of the others, Excelsior and Smithville, they tend to have a more community involvement than we used to have. And I'd like to see that, we'd like to see that back.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Before we would consider a motion, I do want to remove item number C from the consent agenda this evening. There was an error in the value of that donation, so staff's working to get that corrected and will be placed on the future agenda.
We can do it tonight after we approve the consent, if you want, like separately.
Okay.
Make a motion to remove C from the consent agenda?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Make the motion to approve the consent agenda, but with increasing the donation from B. Simon in the amount of $180. Is that correct?
Yes.
It's a separate item. You're just going to approve the consent agenda, and then we'll vote on it separately.
Let's move it to future.
To approve the consent agenda minus C.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Consent agenda passes with item C removed.
Now you can consider item C separately.
Let's just move it to future, check it.
Okay.
We'll move on to, next item is ordinances. First ordinance this evening is a motion approving bill number 2, 2024, presented by the city administrator, and ordinance amending number 1517-2023 in the city code section 700 and section 720 of the city of Carney, Missouri, prescribing the amount to be charged for customers for water and sewer services.
So this ordinance will simply amend our current ordinance, increasing rates for any usage over 2,000 gallons, increasing the amount for water, $2.22 per each 1,000 gallons, and increasing sewer rates, $2.27 per each 1,000 gallons over 2,000. And that's what this does.
So we have the public hearing this evening. Staff already provided a report. Are there any other questions from the board on the proposed ordinance? Seeing none, if we can read the proposed ordinance, first reading by title only, please.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 1517-2023 in the city code section 700 and section 720 of the city of Carney, Missouri, prescribing the amount to be charged to customers for water and sewer services.
Motion to approve on first reading. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Second reading by title only, please.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 1517-2023 in the city code section 700 and section 720 of the city of Carney, Missouri, prescribing the amount to be charged to customers for water and sewer services.
So, I'll second.
Hold the board, please.
Alderman Barker?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer?
Aye.
Vote unanimous, and ordinance passes on the second reading. Second item this evening is a motion approving bill number 3, 2024, an ordinance adopting the fiscal year 2025 annual budget, appropriating expenditures from the revenue of the city, and fixing the compensation for officers and employees for the city of Carney, Missouri.
This ordinance approves the proposed budget that we have spent the last two meetings discussing and going through.
Has there been any changes to it?
There are no changes.
Any other questions from staff of the board? If we can read the proposed ordinance, first reading by title only, please.
An ordinance adopting the fiscal year 2025 annual budget, appropriating expenditures from the revenues of the city, and fixing the compensation for officers and employees for the city of Carney, Missouri.
Make a motion to approve on first read.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Second reading by title only, please.
An ordinance adopting the fiscal year 2025 annual budget, appropriating expenditures from the revenues of the city, and fixing the compensation for officers and employees for the city of Carney, Missouri.
So moved.
I'll second.
Hold the board, please.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderwoman Barker?
Aye.
Vote unanimous, ordinance passes on the second reading. Next item is a motion approving bill number 4, 2024, presented by Tom O'Leary, our police chief, in ordinance approving actions of the police chief and ratifying a cooperative agreement for the transfer of equipment between the city of Carney, Missouri, and Clay County, Missouri. Chief?
Hold it the last year, so we've added some cars to our fleet, and we've kind of moved some cars around. We now have some older cars, and some of the newer guys are driving that don't have the cage in, and the gun racks. We found out in January that Clay County had taken a few cars out of service. The equipment in the cars will not conform with our new cars, but they will fit our older cars. The cars I'm speaking of, we're probably going to take out of service within the next year. So basically, we've got with Clay County and agreed to a transfer of equipment. I put the car in front of the horse and signed a cooperative agreement. I haven't accepted the property yet, but I'm hoping you guys will allow me to accept the surplus property and have to our cars.
Any questions for Chief O'Leary? If we can read the proposed ordinance, first time, by title only, please.
An ordinance approving actions of the police chief and ratifying a cooperative agreement for the transfer of equipment between the city of Carney, Missouri, and Clay County, Missouri.
You can go for a go on first reading.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Second reading by title only, please.
An ordinance approving actions of the police chief and ratifying a cooperative agreement for the transfer of equipment between the city of Carney, Missouri, and Clay County, Missouri.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Hold the board, please.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderwoman Barker?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Vote unanimous, and ordinance passes. Next item is a motion approving bill number 5, 2024, presented by Tom O'Leary, Police Chief, in ordinance approving an agreement for confinement of prisoners between the city of Carney, Missouri, and the Clinton County Sheriff's Office. Chief?
We've used Clay County to house our prisoners ever since I've been here, so, you know, 30, probably 40 years. We've kind of had some ups and downs with them. Sometimes it's easy to get prisoners in, sometimes it's kind of hard. Six or eight months ago, Clay County went through a large remodel of their facility. During the facility, we were kind of choked down to where they would only take our felony cases or provide on people. So we still had an outlet to take the, you know, the people who had committed serious crimes. We're kind of looking around and looking at Clinton County as maybe just a backup option. Clay County would still be my first choice. Clay County is back open, but Clay County has also implemented a lot of restrictions that it takes a lot of time to get somebody to be a lot of stuff we have to, or hoops we have to jump through to get something, you know, invested in, or hold on city charges. So we're kind of looking at Clinton County. We've turned the facility. We've talked to some inmates in the house up there, and just looking for kind of a backup option.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
Tom, were, at one time, weren't we taking prisoners to Henrietta down Richmond, or Ray County?
You know, if we went to Henrietta, boy, it wasn't very often. There was a place up by Polo. It was Ray County Security Housing that we probably utilized 20 years ago, and they finally closed up, and...
Okay, so we don't have that option to...
We do not have that option, no.
Why, how did the costs compare?
The costs are in line. Got there very close.
Okay.
Yes.
If we have none...
I think we've utilized Pattonburg in the past just a little bit, but not, you know, once again, that's an error in my way. It just makes it difficult, so.
If there's none, the questions, if we can read the proposed ordinance, first reading by title only, please.
An ordinance approving an agreement for confinement of prisoners between the city of Carney, Missouri, and the Clinton County Sheriff.
I'm making the motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Second reading by title only, please.
An ordinance approving an agreement for confinement of prisoners between the city of Carney, Missouri, and the Clinton County Sheriff.
Make a motion to approve on second read.
I'll second.
Hold the board, please.
Alderwoman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderwoman Barker?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Vote is unanimous, and ordinance passes. Next item is a motion approving bill number 6, 2024, presented by Tom O'Leary, our police chief, in ordinance approving the ninth amended Missouri Western Interdiction and Narcotics Task Force Memorandum of Understanding. Chief?
Yeah, Mayor Ford, just asking for your permission to sign a memorandum with MoWIN. MoWIN is Missouri Western, the Interdiction Narcotics Task Force. We've been members for many years. It's kind of a joint grant-funded task force with Jackson County, Clay County, Platte County, and the DEA. A lot of the bigger agencies actually supply manpower. We don't. They make some wonderful, you know, they concentrate a lot on train stations, airports, major interstates, and they make some wonderful arrests, you know, throughout the year. And like I say, they're just a good organization to be affiliated with in case we need their services.
Any questions on the proposed ordinance? If we can read the proposed ordinance, first time, first reading by title only, please.
An ordinance approving the ninth amended Missouri Western Interdiction and Narcotics Task Force, MoWIN, Memorandum of Understanding.
Motion to approve. I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Second reading by title only, please.
An ordinance approving the ninth amended Missouri Western Interdiction and Narcotics Task Force, MoWIN, Memorandum of Understanding.
Move to approve on second reading.
I'll second.
Hold the board, please.
Alderwoman Barker?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer?
Aye.
Vote unanimous, ordinance passes on the second reading. Next item is a motion approving bill number 7, 2024, presented by Tom O'Leary, Police Chief, in ordinance approving the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission Strategic Highway Safety Plan Program Agreement.
Yeah, I'm here with an ordinance, asking for your permission to go forward with a $7,000 grant from MoDOT. The grant would cover two solar-powered electric speed signs. This is kind of, all stemmed from a few complaints we had on 92 Highway probably six months ago or so, kind of around the fire station, Porter Ridge area of speeding cars. We addressed the complaint then with some additional traffic enforcement in the area, and then we were made aware of this grant. We put in for the grant. We've accepted it. We think it's a pretty generous grant. We've never had the solar-powered speed signs, but we're thinking this would be a good way to test them out, see if that's something we want to grow in the future if they're effective.
Do we need to get permission if we move that right away, because of...
Yeah, we will check into all the permissions before we move down.
Sure.
I mean, do we need to do that before we get these signs, in case we can't get permission?
I know that MoDOT is who actually told us about the grant and encouraged us to do it, so they are on board.
Okay, I just didn't want to get, we got it something we can't use because I can't put it in.
Yeah, we met with Ben, was the one I think that told us about.
I think this is very proactive.
Yeah.
Are these stationary, or are these...
They are stationary. And I think you, you can actually move them, but they will be mounted on a block or something.
They're not on wheels that you drive?
There are none of the questions, if we can read the proposed ordinance, first reading by title only.
An ordinance approving the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission Strategic Highway Safety Plan Program Agreement.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Second reading by title only.
An ordinance approving the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission Strategic Highway Safety Plan Program Agreement.
Prove on first reading, or second reading?
I'll second that.
Hold the board, please.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderwoman Barker?
Aye.
Vote unanimous, ordinance passes. Next item is a motion approving bill number 8, 2024, presented by Shelley Daniel, our city engineer, in ordinance approving a transportation enhancement funds program agreement between the city of Carney, Missouri... between the city of Kearney, Missouri and the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission relative to the Mac Porter Park Connector shared use path. Shelley?
Good evening, Board. This project came about, um, from the city applying for a grant down at Mark for, um, a top fund just to extend the Mac Porter Park Trail down to thirty-three, and it goes about to the senior center. So this is the funding agreement with MoDOT to accept that grant.
Any questions from the board, our city engineer? If we can read the proposed ordinance, first, uh, reading by title only, please.
An ordinance approving a transportation enhancement funds program agreement between the city of Kearney, Missouri and the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission relative to the Mac Porter Park Connector Shared Use Path Project.
Move to approve on first reading?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Second reading by title only.
An ordinance approving a transportation enhancement funds program agreement between the city of Kearney, Missouri and the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission relative to the Mac Porter Park Connector Shared Use Path Project.
Make a motion to approve on second read?
I'll second.
Pull the board, please.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderwoman Barker?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Vote is unanimous, and ordinance passes. Next item is a motion to approve bill nine, 2024, presented by Shelley Daniel, our city engineer, in ordinance approving a trail improvement agreement between the city of Kearney, Missouri and the Missouri Highways Transportation Commission relative to the maintenance duties the city shall assume with the completion of the Mac Porter Park Connector Shared Use Path Project. Shelley?
So this ordinance is for the same trail that was constructed, that we agree that will make from our trail.
Any questions from the board?
Um, Shelley, where, where are they going to make that go across? MoDOT decides that, right? Where it, just you're going to cross thirty-three?
Now, our engineer will help decide that, but I believe they'll go across towards the Justin Street over to the senior center.
Okay, so it's not going to go like diagonal under the bridge type thing?
No.
Okay, because I got asked that question, and I'm like, I don't think so, but I thought I had.
No, they'll have to find a location with good site distance because for instance...
That's what I thought.
Especially being by the senior center. It'd be a bit slow.
We haven't put up one of those blinking signs like we have on Nineteenth Street, too.
Yeah, that's in the, um, project scope.
Is it? Good.
Any other questions from the board? We can read the proposed ordinance, first reading by title only.
An ordinance approving a trail improvements agreement between the city of Kearney, Missouri and the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission relative to the maintenance duties the city shall assume with the completion of Mac Porter Park Connector Shared Use Path Project.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Second reading by title only, please.
An ordinance approving a trail improvements agreement between the city of Kearney, Missouri and the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission relative to the maintenance duties and the city shall assume with the completion of Mac Porter Park Connector Shared Use Path Project.
Make a motion to approve on second read?
I'll second.
Pull the board, please.
Alderwoman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderwoman Barker?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Vote is unanimous, and ordinance passes. Uh, it's, as we continue to work through and keep our promises on the use tax funding and working at other funding grant opportunities, it's exciting to continue to see our pathways, uh, portion of that, uh, be put to good use. So, thanks again to voters for, for supporting that initiative. Next item is a motion approving bill number ten, 2024, presented by David Pavlich, our Community Development Director, in ordinance amending municipal code section four oh five, five oh five A, uh, permitted land uses in the M Industrial District. We had a public hearing earlier on this, do you have anything else to add from staff?
No other comments other than the planning zoning commission recommend unanimously that the board approve the ordinance.
Alderman, Alderman Barker, do you have anything else to add from the planning and zoning? Okay, if there are no other questions from the board, if we can entertain, I'm sorry, if we can, if you could read the proposed ordinance first time by title of reading, long night, sorry about that.
An ordinance amending municipal code section four zero five dash five zero five A, permitted land uses in the M Industrial District.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Second reading by title only.
An ordinance amending municipal code section four zero five dash five zero five A, permitted land uses in the M Industrial District.
So moved. I'll second.
Pull the board, please.
Alderwoman Barker?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer?
Aye.
Vote is unanimous, and ordinance passes. Uh, last ordinance this evening is a motion approving bill number eleven, 2024, presented by David Pavlich, our Community Development Director, in ordinance amending municipal code section two ten point two two one zero pertaining to the sale and use of fireworks.
Uh, so, right now, our fireworks code allows fireworks sales between June twentieth and, and July fifth during the year. It's basically a seasonal permit that people anywhere in town can purchase, and then you shoot fireworks, fireworks on July fourth. Um, this proposed ordinance will kind of differentiate between what our seasonal fireworks sales are and, um, fireworks sales by jobbers, distributors, and wholesalers licensed by the state. So the state does allow fireworks sales by other people, um, if they're licensed by the state. So jobbers are people that can sell consumer fireworks, uh, they can sell back and forth to wholesalers and things. So this ordinance, uh, establishes that year-round sale only by jobbers and wholesalers licensed by the state of Missouri, only from a permanent building, and that building must also meet our fire and building codes as well. Um, there are other communities that have similar ordinances in Kansas City, adds something similar to that. And there are a few others, not too many of them. Um, so Kearney residents, under this criteria, couldn't just go up on, um, March thirty-first and go buy fireworks, um, unless they met the requirements of the state, meaning there's an affidavit that they signed that those fireworks will be taken out of the state. Um, or somebody from Iowa or another state could come into Kearney, buy fireworks, and take them back home. Um, there are some fireworks locations like Ugo Bell, they have a, a place, and, um, so this would just open up that building that we have to some potential for, uh, some retail sales outside of our seasonal fireworks window. Seasonal fireworks permit is, would still be required of them so that they could sell to Kearney residents between that, uh, July twen- or June twentieth and, uh, July fifth date.
Does that conclude your report?
Yes. Uh, this was prompted by the, the owner of the, of the building that, uh, with the permanent building, the Balfontes. Uh, they've been selling fireworks in the Kearney area for many years. A few years ago, they built their building, uh, they've inquired about that, and so staff prepared a, an ordinance that, uh, we thought was compliant with state statutes, um, for presentation.
So, uh, thank you for being here, Balfonte family, and thank you for investing, uh, continuing to invest in our community. Uh, I'm one person on this board, nothing's changed on my stance since the applicant of the, the board. I don't like the idea of year-round fireworks in our community, several reasons. Uh, one being, I don't want us to turn into Patinsburg, Missouri, or I seventy, Odessa, where we're going to have many of these facilities want to show up in our community. Um, we, we know, for example, we, we allow fireworks to start being sold on June twentieth, but they're not allowed to be shot off until July...
Um, I'm not sure.
I think, I think we allow them to be shot off a week before we allow sales, which always creates nuisance calls to our police department. Um, I think this is going to just increase that issue. Um, we can have anybody sign an affidavit saying that, yeah, we'll purchase it, but we'll take it out of the state. I, I don't think that's going to be, um, that's going to happen. Um, that being said, they have invested in our community, they've built a nice building. Um, and I don't vote unless it's a time breaker, so I'd love to hear the board's thoughts, uh, on this topic. If, if the board has anything else to share on this side, item.
Well, if they're taking them out of our community, and this is a revenue generator for someone who has invested in our community, I think that's awesome. I do see that there is some potential that it may not always be handled correctly. Someone could get someone in from out of town and send them up to buy it, but, um, I think this sounds like an okay idea, personally.
We, you know, we, we put some restrictions on the tattoo parlor, if we wanted to, we'd do the same here. If you're concerned about having a whole bunch of these stores pop up, that thing.
So many per...
Um, yeah, so many per population or something, kind of like we did the tattoo parlor, if you want to rewrite the ordinance for that. That would make you feel better. So, I mean, I, I, I too think that they've been, uh, great citizens for us and built a nice building, and it looks very attractive and stuff, but, I mean, if you're, if you're concerned about having a lot of them, which I understand, um, we did make that kind of change for the tattoo parlor, and maybe something we could look at for this as well.
Any other input from the board?
If we, since we have the fire chief here, I'm going to put him on the spot. Um, what's your thoughts on this, this ordinance?
I'd probably defer to Jeff, I don't know. I don't feel like we have a ton of incidents around fireworks, so, you know, while the possibility exists, but fortunately, we haven't had to deal with those things too much. I'm not overly familiar with year-round sales compared to issuing the permits for the, the dates of their, for the jobbers, is what they call them, the, the temporary seasonal.
Yeah, the state, state car marshal governs all the, all the year-round sales for, for fireworks. Um, I, I don't see an issue with, with all having them. I, I, I just don't think it's a big issue, you know, you're, like, like Dan said, if you're, if you're worried about the, you know, more of these popping up, you restrict how many can come in per population or something like that, but...
I, I do like the, the, like we did for the tattoo parlors and, and restricting it by population. Uh, I think that's a good way that we can regulate how many of the permanent. Obviously, it wouldn't affect the Balfontes, you know, but, uh, I think it would be a good way to regulate how many comes into town, so, so we don't look like a I seventy going down, and every exit's got two or three of them, so...
Yeah. I would agree with Dan and David on that. I think, um, I love what you guys have done to the community, I love what you bring to the community. Um, and it'll also bring sales tax revenue to the community, which are all wins for us. Um, but I do agree, the aesthetics of what the community looks like is also something that is important to us. And so by restricting the number of that type of business in the community, I think is a valid way of, of control, keeping kind of control over that.
Would, would, I think what I'm hearing from the consensus of the board is with one full-time facility per twelve thousand people...
So like in one per ten?
What was the language on the tattoo parlor?
Was it ten thousand?
I think it was one per ten.
Yeah.
Okay. I would propose the same language for this.
Yeah, I, that's on the same language.
Or maybe like per ten or a fraction thereof, meaning one until ten, and then what you'd like, if you get to ten thousand, one per person.
Which means we could have two.
Yeah.
Right, yeah. I like that language, if we could amend the, the ordinance to reflect that.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, it's a motion.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? If you can read the proposed ordinance, second reading by title only.
An ordinance amending municipal code section two ten dash dot twenty-two ten pertaining to the sale and use of fireworks.
Adding...
Adding the restriction as amended.
Adding the same language as is included in the tattoo ordinance?
Yes, for population, yeah.
Same population restrictions.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve on first reading the ordinance as amended. I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
I believe that because we're amending it, and because it wasn't printed for a full twenty-four hours and available to the public, if we pass this tonight, we actually have to read every word of the ordinance, it cannot just be passed by title only. So could we postpone this to the next meeting to bring the amended language? Um, and so that we can do it only by, by, right, read by title only?
Can we do it first reading only and not do a second reading, and bring it back next?
Does it matter if we don't?
So you're asking for a table, is what you're asking for?
Postpon- postponing it. Till, till the next meeting.
And I actually will not be here then, so if we could postpone it to the second one in March.
How does that affect Mr. Balfonte?
Totally fine with that.
Yeah, I, I'd hate for him to be held up anymore.
Yeah, would too.
Would, would the board consider approving a stated this evening, we can always modify the ordinance later? It's, I, it's a desire of the board, we'll, we'll get it accomplished, um, but...
So approve it as, and then amended it next, please?
What's your thoughts on that?
That we can do without reading the entire thing.
Yes.
Okay, so theoretically, should we approve it that way, and someone comes before us in the next thirty days? It's true. Thirty days. Then we... I think we just postpone this period then.
I think that's a good idea.
Okay.
Make a motion to postpone?
Wait a minute, hold on.
I was going to say, if, if we do the language at one per ten thousand people, a fraction thereof, we're over eleven thousand people, so if somebody, it'd have to be if two came in in the next thirty days, it's all, wouldn't really affect, I don't think it's going to affect anybody.
Yeah, we have them.
Yeah.
I think it would be better to postpone, let's go ahead and postpone, um, and then we can review with legal and make sure that everything's done correctly. We had a motion to postpone, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? We'll be in touch, thank you guys for being here, and, uh, we'll, we'll get this accomplished for you.
Are we postponing to the first meeting in March or the second meeting?
We're... So it's a... Please.
Hold on.
Okay, uh, we have no resolutions this evening, no items for review or presentation, I have no communications. We'll move on to the city administrator's report.
Um, only that our next regular board meeting will be Monday, March fourth, right here at six thirty P M.
We'll move on to Alderman discussion, Alderman Spencer?
I have nothing this evening.
Alderman Holt?
Um, I would like to submit a request to get the old way sign that was first set down here, this ugly green thing that we first tried to do. It was, nice was up there, but it's weathered now, it looks kind of, kind of bad. Um, right there on, um, Clay, Clayway, if we could get that just removed, appreciate it, do you know what I'm talking about?
Oh, that way finding sign?
Yes, the way finding there by the...
Yeah.
By the Steve McDonald's.
Oh, by Westboro.
Yeah, by Westboro, if we can get that removed, that looks kind of, I mean, it's easy to forget, but it, it looks bad when you drive by it, if we get that removed. Um, and then also, I, I want to thank our officers that were down at the parade. Um, it was a stressful day, um, started out so nice and just takes a few people to cause a problem, and, um, I know our men were down there helping with that as well. And, uh, it was very tense, and all the departments had to work together to get that done, so thank you for having our guys down there.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I have...
Alderman Lehman?
Um, I'd like to piggyback on Alderman Holt's, um, comment about her officers being down at, at the parade. Um, yeah, it's a, it's a huge event for the city of Kansas City, and, um, if it weren't for surrounding communities like ours, uh, supplying manpower... communities like ours supplying manpower to hopefully keep everything in order, it's, it's just great to see our officers down there. You know, there was a time when that wouldn't have happened, and, and so it's great to see our officers down there. It's unfortunate of the events of that day, but I'm, I'm sure our officers responded as, as they would any time, so please offer my gratitude for that.
Alderman Barker?
I have nothing this evening, thank you.
All right. Next item is we have an executive session notice, a closed session per RSMO six ten oh two one subsection one, legal actions, causes of action or litigation involving a public governmental body and any confidential or privileged communications between a public governmental body or its representatives and its attorneys, and six ten oh two one subsection thirteen, individually identifiable personnel records, performance ratings, or records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment, and our meeting will be adjourned from there. So this concludes our public portion of the meeting. If we can entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
I'll second.
Call vote, please.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderwoman Barker?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?